It's financial, it's close.
It's financial, okay.
When we started having to do that, we had two board members just right off.
That's why we have.
Testing, testing, testing. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we'd like to welcome you to MPC hearings for this particular date, July sixth, nineteen twenty-two. It is customary that we'll begin with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. If you'd care to join us, please stand. Ms. Jackson will do our invocation and Mr. Robinson will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Please bow our heads. Father God, we come to you with our arms stretched wide, receiving all that you have in store for us. We thank you, Lord. We thank you for everything. Thank you for our arriving mercy and thank you for that same departing mercy, Lord. What we ask of you, Lord, is to watch over each and every one of us that are here today assembled. Have this, have this meeting be decent and in order and also fruitful. For these blessings, we ask in your name, amen.
Please place the flag, face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. At this particular time, we'll make a few opening remarks as it relates to our procedures for today. Welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission meeting. For purpose, for public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make a public comment on an application, we have MPC comment slips at the speaker's stand down in front of us or next to the podium when you come in. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come in, when you come forward to speak. Please state your full name, your mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes is allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allocated for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on the cases before and moving to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to make any comments. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office at three one eight six seven three six four eight zero after one P. M. On tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission's taking action on the agenda item. All of the MPC Board's zoning recommendations are submitted to either the city council or the parish commission for a final decision, depending on the location of the property that's in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as relates to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to be, to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room when you come in the first set of doors. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. At this particular time, we will call for a motion to approve the June one twenty-two minutes.
I'd like to make a motion for the approved minutes from June twenty-two meeting.
Been motioned by Ms. Jackson, second by Ms. McCullough. All those in favor, touch yes. Oppositions, no. Thank you very much. That motion carries. As we proceed into our scheduled public hearing cases, item number six, case number twenty-two dash one eighteen dash C, special use permit and site plan. Do we have someone here from Durham Transport Academy? Anyone here for Durham Transport Academy? Any comments from staff members at this point?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if the board has any questions about this application, but if the board does have any questions about this application, we would ask that you defer and continue. We may have had a mix-up in communication with Durham Transport until next month so that they could be here in attendance.
All right, sir. Before we do that, is there anyone here in opposition for Durham's Transport Academy? Anyone here in opposition? At this particular time, we'll entertain the motion to defer and continue. We have a motion by Ms. McCullough.
Second.
Second by Mr. Robinson. All those in favor, please vote yes. Oppositions, no. All right, that will be deferred and continued. Thank you very much, board members. We'll move on to case number twenty-one dash one nine one dash C, an appeal. I'm going to invite staff to make comments relative to this.
Mr. Chair, this is always such a wonderful way for appeals to end. I'd just like to share with you, and I think that you have in your pocket, a motion and order of dismissal. We received a motion, a motion and order of dismissal from the city attorney of the city of Shreveport that this matter had been resolved. This is signed by Judge Michael Pittman, that there is no longer any questions, or there's no longer any petitions or appeals on the part of the Haven Property Owners Association. So we just ask that you do a motion and vote to have this removed from your agenda.
All right, ladies and gentlemen.
I'll so move, but I have a question.
All right, we'll just entertain the question first.
Yes, sir.
Do we know what happened between the parties?
It is my understanding that the property was purchased by the Haven Property Owners Association. Therefore, they had no problems with the use because they now will be able to determine what happens on that property.
Well, Mr. Chairman, given that, I will offer the motion to remove this item from the agenda.
We have a motion by Mr. Robinson and a second by Ms. McCullough to remove this particular item from the agenda. All those in favor, please vote yes. Oppositions, no. And that motion carries. I'll take a moment to call your attention to the leaping that was passed out to each one of us as a result of progress reports regarding case hurried by MPC. Go down to item number five and look at the very bottom line. While you're doing that, we'll get.
I was left out.
There you go. You can have that comment.
Thank you.
All right, as we move forward on item number eight, case number twenty-two dash one twenty-two dash C, zoning request cross development. Is there anyone present who care to speak in favor of that?
Yeah, Michael Kelch with Raylene Associates, forty-nine thirteen Shed Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven eleven eleven. The engineer here on behalf of the developer, the developer's also here in the audience too, if there's any questions that they need. I noticed on y'all's, on the sheet on the board there, that that whole area, that whole acreage is, is circled. We're only asking for zoning for the two point one nine, I think it was two point, two point one six acres. I don't know if that is correct or not, but.
Let me help you. Just in case you come back before us again, Mr. Jean, would you explain the purpose of that red line being circled around that property? So that he'll know.
Are you talking about the hatched area?
Yeah, the hatched area is the total, I believe that's the total acreage that the developer, or that the owner, landowner owns, but that is not the, we're not, I think that's much more than two point one six acres. We're only trying to rezone two point one six acres, which is this area right in here.
All right.
And I, I think the application should represent that, and the legal description that was submitted should represent the two point one six acres. I don't think the landowner is, is wanting to rezone that entire piece at this time.
We're trying to resolve this, Mr. Chair. You got it resolved?
So here, here was the, the legal description that was submitted for the two point one six acres, and that is represented on this site plan. I don't know if you have a better site plan. This one's kind of cut off with your packet. So you could see, this is the, the site plan. It's kind of, I don't know if you can zoom out. It's kind of cut off, but here's the intersection that you were looking at on that previous. So here, here's the intersection right here, and so here's that same intersection right in this area. So it's only, the property we're asking to rezone is only this, this small area right here, which is two point one six acres. I think the full property that y'all have sketched out on there appears by the tax assessors, looks like it's. Looks like it may be, I'm not sure on this, but six point five acres. That's the full property, but we're only requesting to rezone two point one six to C four for our auto body shop.
We, we feel like, Mr. Chair, that the legal description was for the two point one acres of property for the rezoning. I think we need to do some corrective action before this goes to city council, but we believe that what you would be rezoning would be the two point one acres, not the six point five acres. So we believe that this is properly in front of you, and we could, we can take actions today, and we will correct this vicinity map prior to this going before the city council.
All right, sir. Okay. Mr. Michael, we appreciate you calling that to our.
Yeah, thank you all.
Anything else you want to share with us about this piece of property and what, what you plan to do?
Uh, it's, it's an auto body shop, caliber collision. If you recall, I think some of you may, I'm sure y'all were present for the case that was just on Burke Coons a few months ago. I guess maybe it's been about six months or more ago. We came through with a similar request for a Burke Coon site. It's the same, same style. It's a, it's, you know, just a caliber collision auto body shop. We feel like it's a good use for the area, very compatible for the area. There's C four zoning adjacent to it for car, with car dealerships, et cetera. Yeah, you can see the, the C four zoning, so it's very compatible use.
All right, sir. Any questions for this gentleman before we invite any other speakers on this issue? Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Kelch, thank you for coming today. Anybody show up for your neighborhood meeting?
Yes, there was one gentleman, gentleman there. Do you have his name? He wa, he was not in, or for or against it. He was just, he was just, he was a property owner, I think, on the corner, he said. And once we told him exactly where the, the location was next to the, the car dealership, it was a ways away from his property, and so he wasn't concerned with it at all. I have his name somewhere, but I, I don't, I didn't bring it with me. We submitted the report to the MPC with, with all of that.
So it was just the one, the report on the one person's comment?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you already under construction?
We are not, no. The Burke Coon site is under construction. Like I said, I mentioned, we came with another site several months back, but no, this site is not under construction.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Any opposition to this request? Seeing none. Any further comments from board members? Hearing none. We'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Robinson.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCullough. All those in favor, please vote yes. Oppositions, vote no. All right, that motion carries. Thank you very much, board members. At this particular time.
Thank you. Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So that approval, that was for the two point one six?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank y'all.
All right, item number nine, case number twenty-two dash one hundred dash C, special use permit and the site plan for Broadus Towers.
Everyone, Alec Broadus, Four Country Place Circle, Arlington, Texas, seven six oh one six. I'll give you a little history on this, what we're trying to do here. Initially, I'm a, an acquisition guy for Verizon, so they give me an area where they're trying to improve coverage. This particular area of Shreveport is under covered, terrible capacity, bad coverage in this particular section. I go out, try to find a location that meets all the code guidelines, then I try to make a deal with the landowner. This particular piece of property, we negotiated for a long time. It's under contract to be purchased to build the tower. We went to the, planning with Alice. It's Alice, right? Alice did a great job, by the way. And I initially wanted a taller tower because the engineers, I'm not trying to go over your head here, but the engineers wanted a certain height so they would be able to get optimal coverage. So I was at one thirty-ish, one thirty-five. I don't recall exactly. And they reviewed it, and they had found a tower about a mile to the south that if they used that tower along with the tower that we're proposing at a hundred feet, you'd be able to get similar coverage. So they recommended that we go with a hundred-foot tower versus the hundred and thirty-five-foot tower, which shortened the tower there. The property is approximately four acres, and that's that in a nutshell. Verizon will be the carrier there. The tower will be available to other carriers that still might have issues in the area. I, I submitted the tower to T-Mobile, and they, and the engineers over there, I know those guys, and they asked for this tower to be on their wish list, meaning that it's not on the budget yet, but they would like for it to be there because they also have coverage issues. Primarily, one carrier has a coverage issue. Most all of them have coverage issue. And if you were able to see a map, this is a giant hole with towers all around it. So this will fill a gap and improve coverage, five G. It'll be good for the area. If anybody has any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer.
All right, board members, any questions for Mr. Broadus?
Did I understand that the community didn't meet regarding this tower, or?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Do I understand that the community where this tower is located, you met with the community or nobody showed up?
Yes, we, we sent out notices to the community and nobody showed up.
Nobody showed up.
No, ma'am. It's on Kingston and Crab Apple, kind of. It's, it's zoned proper per, per the ordinance.
Okay, but you got no participation from the citizens at all?
No. I was ready. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? All right, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Is there anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Anyone else present who care to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is there anyone present who care to speak in opposition to this request? Do we have any opposition to this request? Hearing none. We'll entertain questions, comments from board members? Hearing none. We'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to, to approve.
Motion by Ms. McCullough, second by.
Second.
By Mr. Sater. All those in favor, please vote yes. Oppositions, no. All right, Mr. Broadus, step one.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome. All right, at this particular time, as we move down the agenda, we're down to agenda item number ten, case number twenty-two dash four, C T A C, Code Text Amendments, and this will be presented by Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Adam Bailey, five oh five Travis Suite, four forty, staff member of the MPC. There are two Code Text amendments in front of you. We'll go over twenty-one dash four dash C A, CTA, has to do with, predominantly with liquor. Pursuant to the city council's directive, the Shreveport U D C requires an update to certain alcohol-related uses to ensure consistency with city policies to improve clarity and to better serve the public. As a part of this review process, staff surveyed, analyzed codes and policies with other agencies as appropriate and applicable. These agencies consisted of neighboring cities, regional cities, as well as meetings with the Shreveport Police Department's ABO office. The results of this effort are the Code Text in front of you, that has to do with definitions, use standards, distance requirements, and factors regarding public convenience or necessity. Amendment one is amending the use matrix. We're adding two new uses. That's liquor delivery services and liquor sales. All of those uses as, would be, in those zoning districts would be permitted use by right. We're deleting the use retail sales of alcohol. Amendment two is adding new definitions to liquor delivery services and liquor sales. Amendment three is updating the definition of retail sales of alcohol, beer, and wine. Amendment four is adding a new use standard for liquor sales. Within that is where some of the distance proximity requirements are. Mainly, there's two of them, that no establishment with liquor sales be located no closer than two hundred feet from any residential zoning district. The other one is any establishment with liquor sales must be located no closer than one thousand feet from any other existing establishment with liquor sales. And we're updating the use standard for retail sales of alcohol, beer, and wine, and we're adding parking requirements for liquor delivery services and liquor sales. That's all of it in a quick nutshell. Be answered, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members? Chair?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to share with you, as you well know, the legislative arm of the city of Shreveport is the city council, and the city council can call a moratorium at any time without any input from the Metropolitan Planning Commission. This council decided that it was going to be a collaborative council with the planning arm of the city of Shreveport, and that's why back in October, the city council asked you as the MPC board to declare a moratorium and to do a study on liquor stores in the city of Shreveport. That was a, that was a very impacted thing for the council to do because it could have exerted all of its authority and totally ignored you, but it wanted, it wanted you to be involved. It wanted you to make recommendations, and it wanted you to utilize your staff to do the research necessary to evaluate the effectiveness of the, the liquor ordinance in the city of Shreveport. And I just wanted to share that with you because this is the end result of that collaboration between the city council, the MPC board, and the MPC staff.
All right, sir. Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, I believe we're at a point where we'll entertain a motion in, at this point, on this particular case.
Make a motion.
We have a motion by Ms. McCullough.
Second.
To approve, second by Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please vote yes. Oppositions, no. All right, that motion carries. At this particular time, item case number twenty-two dash seven dash C T A C, Code Text Amendment. Mr. Adam Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These Code Text amendments address, for the better part, to describe it, political signs. We're in the midst of the political campaign season twenty twenty-two, from the national conference that Mr. Clark and Mr. Jean went to. Mr. Jean attended a session on signs, and he came back with valuable information saying that our ordinance, when it comes to political signs, might not be a hundred percent correct. So to combat that, to make it, bring it more into compliance, we are offering a couple of amendments. Three, in short, the first one is we are giving definitions of what a one-time event is, a temporary sign, and a yard sign. Those currently do not exist in the code right now. Amendment number two is we are taking the subsection for political signs completely out. Amendment number three is we are adding a subsection for a temporary sign and what is allowed as a temporary sign. We believe that with these changes, that a political sign will be classified as a one-time event. It'll be regulated underneath a temporary sign and will be in compliance should there be anybody want to contest it in court. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, any questions for Mr. Bailey relative to this particular Code Text? All right, hearing none. We'll entertain a motion. Motion by Ms. McCullough.
Second. Second.
Second by Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please vote yes. Oppositions, vote no. Mr. Bailey, thank you very much. That motion carries. At this particular time, we're at the end of our public hearings, and we're down to item number twelve, old business. At this particular time, I'll, I'll invite staff to make any comments on our old business that perhaps maybe we would need to become aware of or reminded of. I have one, but you go right ahead.
Well, I don't know if we would consider it old, a new carrot, but I'd just like to remind those of you who were not at the, the work session, that the planning commission training will be conducted the Saturday at the Criminal Lab, Criminalistic Lab at sixteen thirty, Tulane. This is going to be four hours of. This is going to be four hours of, of comprehensive training for you, uh, to get an understanding of, uh, what the role is of planning commissioners. Uh, there will be a section on ethics. You have a very fine line that you have to tread, uh, in reference to ethics. And if you cross that line, there are some pretty severe consequences. But that, these representatives from the state APA office will be sharing that information with you. Some of you attended, uh, the, the conference in Lafayette last year, so that's why you were not contacted. I wanted to make sure you didn't feel like you were being ignored and when we did not contact you about the training. But if you attended that session, you've met your requirements for the four hours of, uh, planning commission training. But like we said, we just want to make sure that, that we stress, uh, that you, uh, will be required and hopefully you will attend the four hours of, uh, planning commission training. Uh, some of you are, uh, were dooted up real nicely today and came and took your pictures for the, uh, wall of, we're, we're, we've reestablished the MPC board, the zoning voter appeals, and created, uh, by the Cattle Parish Commission, the Cattle Parish Planning and Zoning Commission. So we have three walls in the conference room and we will continue to have work sessions. But we wanted to make certain that, uh, board members had the same level of respect that city council members and parish commissioner members have. If you notice, when you walk into these chambers, you're looking at pictures of city council persons and parish commissioners. So, uh, you didn't get it done this time, uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, you can come, uh, to the zoning board of appeals, uh, pre-briefing meeting, uh, work session, which is, uh, two weeks from today, uh, at 1:30, a- and, and get the pictures taken. It'll take only a few minutes. We really want every board member to be on the wall of honor within the MPC conference room. And that's all I have right now on the old business, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clark, when did you say it's going to be? To take the pictures?
I'm trying to not give you the wrong time. I think, uh, the, the photographer will return for the ZBA, uh, meeting to take pictures of ZBA board members. And I don't have the date.
The 20th.
The 20th.
I spoke with them.
Okay, the 20th at, at 1 o'clock. And they will be taking pictures from 1 to 2. Uh, it takes only about 10 minutes. If you'll come and get the pictures taken, we can put this behind us and it would be most appreciated. That's all I have.
All right, I do want to take a moment to, to thank the secretary for sending out our notice recently as it related to, uh, ethics training online and the, the information that you go to to do that. It takes about an hour, depending on how fast you click and how many answers you get right or wrong. Uh, there's no wrong answers, you don't fail the test. But you go through the system and would you hold up that certificate? I saw somebody with a certificate earlier. There's, that's what it looks like when you complete it. Whose name's on that one, please ma'am?
Ms. Sater.
Harold Sater?
Yes.
Well, all right then, Mr. Sater, congratulations. Thank you.
And I saw that, uh, Ms. McCullough had also completed her training.
He just said it.
What did he say?
I said, Mrs. McCullough has also completed her training.
Thank you.
She completed her training like the first week after being informed, uh, that she had to take it. I, I always wait to December to decide.
All right, also in that same correspondence, Ms. McCullough knows well what happens if you don't do it, right, Ms. McCullough? All right then.
Get it out of the way.
That's out of experience. The other item on that same, uh, email was relegated to the subject of financial disclosure. So you would want to complete that document as soon as you can. Um, I think, um, the timeline on the ethics training is December. But the financial disclosure was in May, 2020, 2022, I'm sorry. So you're behind already as far as the calendar is concerned. It doesn't take but a few minutes. You print off the forms or you can type them in on your computer. And if you don't make a whole lot of money like, uh, some people I know, you won't have any problems filling that thing out, especially if you're retired. So, uh, I would encourage you to do that and, um, get that in the system because they will, uh, reach out and visit with you at any, some point in time in the future.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes, sir.
Just, just, just for, uh, record purposes, uh, attorney to God is going to look into whether or not this board is required to do financial disclosures since it was just, just appointed.
Well, I tell you what, that, that'd make me happy because I, I've got a stack of what I've been doing every year since I've been on this board.
Yeah, that, that, this board, everything is like I shared with you earlier in, in the work session. Everything has been totally discombobulated and turned upside down.
Okay.
Uh, this board was recently created, appointed, confirmed, uh, so we're checking to see, uh, will all of these things be required as far as disclosure next year or if there are any requirements this year? And we will get that information to you as quickly as we can.
So I read you to say you will let us know if we need to go ahead and do this or not?
The attorney is going to look it up and I'm going to worry her to death until she lets me know and then we'll let you know.
Because it, it relates to 2021, it doesn't count, then refer to 2022, it's for the last year. Am I right?
Yeah, and some, and some of you were, you know, were confirmed after May 15th.
That's correct.
So, you know, there's a lot of confusion and we'll get it all straightened out though.
Well, thank you very much for helping us out with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Robertson.
These remarks might, um, fall into the category of, uh, cats out of the bag already because they reference the Code Text Amendments that we just approved. But I've been going through some of the, some of the language here and I have a question for Mr. Clark and/or Mr. Bailey. The commission has, um, made an effort to rid the city of the colorful, uh, temporary signs that, um, are used at a lot of small businesses. And I believe that period of, uh, grace has come and gone.
And, and we went into a detailed discussion upstairs, but I'll be happy to go through it again.
Well, uh, uh, I might like to hear some of those highlights and I hate that you have to repeat yourself.
No problem at all.
My, my question is, and it's probably an obvious one for the planners, but anything that we, uh, approved today with regard to temporary signs, is that going to be a loophole for these small businesses that want to continue using these, uh, these multicolored, um, signs?
We do not believe that that's going to be a loophole because these signs, uh, expired as of June 30th, uh, 2022. And if you've noticed around the city, signs are beginning to be removed, uh, as we speak. And we're expecting all signs to be removed by the end of July. Uh, but there was no extension to the ordinance. We did what we did to assist the small businesses, uh, in order for them to attempt to bounce back from COVID. You remember we shut down and a whole lot with, uh, with small businesses. They were having a difficult time notifying their customers that they were open again. And, uh, but we explained to those sign company owners at that time and they're well aware that this ended as of June 30th. And we have no intentions of proposing anything to you to extend that.
Well, I appreciate that, best intentions, of course, you know, but, um, some of this language suggests that a commercial establishment can have a temporary sign up to 16 square feet if it has a grand opening.
And that's different from what these signs were doing. These signs were doing some of everything. But, you know, a grand opening sign is just a temporary, uh, sign that talks about, uh, when a business is going to open and then in a certain amount of time. And Adam may be more up to date. I have to share with you that the zoning administrator had an emergency and that's why he's not here. And this is his area. And he would get so excited to be able to explain all of this to you, but, uh, he missed his opportunity. But, uh, I think, Adam, are you, do you have anything there or we can bring this information back at our next meeting?
So is the confusion or the, the question on whether a, um, the, the signs with the colorful letters would be classified as a temporary sign? They would not because under the definition, it's saying that the temporary sign is constructed of cloth, canvas, cardboard, wallboard, or other like temporary materials. Those that are out there are steel construction, you know, very, you know, structurally sound. And so, um, I'm, my thinking is that it wouldn't be classified as a temporary sign.
And the word temporary is defined somewhere in here?
So under amendment one, um, there's three new definitions.
Okay.
Are you looking at the exhibit? Go down, um, here, let me.
Maybe you could just read it to me. I know you could find it quicker than I can.
Sorry, um, a sign that is constructed of cloth, canvas, cardboard, wallboard, or other like temporary materials with or without a structural frame intended for a temporary period of display. Examples include, uh, placards for public demonstrations, real estate signs, political signs, construction signs, or signs that advertise a grand opening, festival, state or local fair, cattle or horse show.
And the word temporary? Is that defined, I know you defined it somewhere.
Well, I mean, temporary sign, that, that's the, um, I'm not familiar with that temporary is defined in the UDC.
Are you talking about duration, Mr. Robertson?
Well, under, under duration, under a one-time event, that is defined. Do you may read the definition of a one-time event?
Yes.
Uh, one-time event, a temporary sign advertising, uh, a one-time event shall mean a sign advertising an event of limited duration, which is either non-recurring or if recurring, occurring at distinct and or defined intervals. Illustrious examples of signs advertising one-time event include, without limitations, sign advertising carnivals, concerts, public meetings, sporting events, political campaigns, the sale or lease of immovable property, the grand opening of a business, a festival, a state or local fair, and a cattle or horse show. The foregoing examples are given for illustrative purposes only and shall not be interpreted as exhaustive or as limiting the generality of this definition of one-time event.
So there's no, uh, say, two weeks or three weeks or one month?
I'm understanding where you're headed.
I'm sorry?
I'm understanding where you're headed, uh, because I feel the same thing that you, you're expressing is that there should be a timeframe that dictates outlines what temporary is. And we may have to go back and review this before it goes to city council.
I have a question.
Ms. McCullough?
Uh, in the last meeting, something was mentioned regarding a, uh, I think it was a sunset clause, so does this, does this apply?
The sunset clause is for those, uh, portable reader boards.
For them, for the portables?
June 30th.
June 30th, okay. But this wouldn't, because this is not a portable here, right? That Adam is describing.
These are temporary signs, like political signs, uh. And that's something we need to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
So have we identified a flaw then?
I think we have. But it's not a flaw that can't be corrected. Any more questions? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Jackson?
Okay, so you, you did, you read that the, um, this, the, I guess the duration of it was for that event only at the one-time event?
Right.
So would that not, um, be, be, you know, it could be used? I mean, because it's just for that event?
We're pausing to give the attorney a chance to take a look at the paperwork she has in front of her.
Based on the, I'm sorry, based on the definition for temporary sign, this only does apply to one-time events. So that definition would suffice unless the temporary sign would be applied to other situations? Is it going to be applied to any other situation besides just events, one-time events?
If they are, they're typically defined within the code for that.
So that there's separate definitions or separate provisions in the code for any other event that would need a sign?
So, uh, under the use standards, look at amendment, um, next page, the last 11.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I believe that that definition is sufficient because it's applying to one-time events specifically. So that temporary would apply for a one-time event in, in any other situation, as Mr. Bailey pointed out, then whatever provision applies to that event would come into play. If that makes sense?
Makes a lot of sense.
I, I believe it does. I think Ms. Jackson has a point. The, the staff can look at the content of the sign and determine if it's old and needs to come down. For example, if the grand opening has already been held or the political campaign is over or, uh, the concert, uh, was two weeks ago, et cetera, et cetera.
That would be correct since in the definition, it, it gives you the example. So if you were to go, if those examples were to arise and those signs would be there, then you would look to see, okay, was it a concert? Was it a political campaign, whatever the case may be? And if the sign was still present, then what needs to be done would follow. But I think the definition is sufficient.
Mr. Bailey, I believe on, on the page two, under temporary signs, item 11D, does that, does that cover what Mr. Robinson's talking about?
While they're looking at that, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I think that based on what the attorney has stated, we protect it. But we still may want to look, want to look at this again to see if it needs more clarity in explaining exactly what temporary signs are and the duration of temporary signs.
I mean, that's, that's fine, I, but it spelled out on days prior to the event and days at the end.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so you're, you're, you're looking at a copy of the exhibit and unfortunately they, those weren't added, um, to the staff report. But yes, under use standards.
Do you mind if I read it?
Uh, go ahead.
All right, it's, uh, 11 temporary signs, item D. Temporary signs advertising a one-time event shall not be erected more than 90 days prior to the initi- initiation of the one-time event and shall be removed within 10 days following the termination of the one-time event. Does that kind of answer where you're going?
And that language is still in effect?
Well, that was in the Code Text that y'all just recommended.
Okay, so there is a, a drop dead date then?
Yes.
Okay. Well, as one who has served on committees trying to write new sign codes, I know how dogged the, uh, sign industry can be in terms of wanting to put up what they want to put up, when they want to put it up and for how long. Uh, I just, uh, hope that our codes are bulletproof.
And like I said, once, once again, Mr. Chair and Mr. Robertson, we will look at this again.
All right.
To make sure it is bulletproof. The attorney has. To make sure it is bulletproof. The attorney has said that it can move forward and go up to council. But as you all know, we are constantly reviewing and evaluating the effectiveness of, of the ordinances to make sure that they do exactly what we need them to do. So we will look at it again and have further discussions on it.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson, thank you, Mr. Clark. I believe, uh, if there's no further comment relative to all business, we're on item thirteen where we enter new business, and I believe there was some subjects that we talked about upstairs that you would want to cover, uh, prior to, uh, completing the new business on the agenda today.
Yes, I, I need, uh, Attorney to God to talk to you about the, uh, explain to you about the, the process of drawing lots and what will be necessary for us to be able to draw lots today that will determine the term of, uh, the term that you will serve as planning commissioners from going forward from the state, Attorney to God.
Yes, good afternoon again. So per the, uh, state law, once the board has been populated, there has to be lots drawn to determine the term, the term of each member. It's, one member is one year, one two years, one three years, two for four years, two for five years, and two for six years. And so since the board has now been populated, we do need to do so at this meeting. However, when the agenda was published, it did not have an, uh, item outlined for drawing lots. And per the open meetings, um, laws, we cannot change the agenda within twenty-four hours. So in order to take up anything, a matter that's not on the agenda, it has to be voted on by the entire, well, not the entire board, the members who are present at the meeting by a unanimous vote. So you guys will just have to put this matter forward, describe with reasonable specificity what it is that you guys are discussing, why it's being added on the agenda today, and then vote on it unanimously. If it gets approved unanimously, you can now take the matter. But before voting on it, you just have, have to make sure that you allot a time for public comments. If there are no public comments, then you can just proceed forward with voting, uh, for, uh, drawing lots. However, we do have three members missing. Um, we can still proceed, or you can still proceed with that. However, we would have to do this again the next meeting for the three members who are not here today. If it was just one member, it would just be the remaining term. But since we have more than one member missing, we have to do this again for them in order for them to draw lots and determine what terms would apply for them. Do you have any questions or anything that you need me to clarify?
Got a couple of questions. If, I'll get you to repeat. You said one year, one year, one year, then two year, two year, two year, is that what?
Yes, so it's one member for one year, one member for two years, one member for three years, and then two for four, two for five, two for six. If that makes sense? So for the first term, the one year, two years, and three years, one member for each. And then three years, four years, uh, four years, five years, six years, is two through, two, two, and two, to make up the nine total members.
All right. Is that clear as mud to everybody?
If you need to see it, it's, uh, you can look it up at Louisiana Rights Statute thirty-three, one forty point four. It's written out if you, you're more of a visual person.
Well, I suppose at this particular time, from what I understand, where I sit, it would be my responsibility to call for a motion to, to, uh, move forward with this lot drawing today or to, uh, to postpone it and do it when there's more members present. Now, is that where we're supposed to be right now, Attorney?
Yes, if you take on the motion, if it's not a unanimous vote, then you guys can't do it. You can take it for the next meeting.
In other words, we would need a unanimous vote of all of us here today to do the drawing, uh, for lots at this particular time. If we don't get a unanimous vote today, then this will be addressed at next month's board meeting during the month of August.
That is correct.
Any comments?
My question, perhaps maybe, would be, uh, six of the members present draw, then there's, there's, uh, three slots left in the box to be drawn at an appropriate time?
Yes, at the next meeting.
At the next meeting. All right. Any comments, board members, before we move forward, one way or the other? Pull your mic down, please.
I guess the what-if would be if the six of us would draw today and the other three at the next meeting would draw, yeah, that would be all nine members drawing. Okay, so, okay.
You're good. Any other comments? All right. What I would do is entertain a motion to follow through with the drawing of lots today. And if, uh, we get a unanimous vote in a second on that, then we'll draw today. If we don't get a unanimous vote today, then it will be done during the August meeting. Is that correct, Attorney?
Yes, before you go, however, be sure to ask for any public comments.
Say it one more time?
However you, before you vote, once you take the motion, before you vote on it, be sure to ask if there are any public comments.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. Board members, you've heard that statement. Do you have any comments at this particular time relative to the situation that we are? This is all new, it's starting July one, uh, with a new board, and this is why we're at this particular point. Let me muddy the water just a little bit more in my mind. Once we've drawn lots, at that, do we move forward in, with the nominating committee and get prepared for December thirty-first, or does everything change all of a sudden after, uh, lots have been drawn?
I'm sorry, repeat that question one more time?
Once the lottery has been done, the drawing has been done, and since this is starting July one with a new board completely, according to the bylaws, do we wait until December to elect new officers going into twenty-twenty-three? Uh, do we, are we obligated to do new officers immediately upon completion of all nine members being drawn and decided on their, uh, length of service?
I would wait for all nine members' terms to be determined before, uh, proceeding with nominating officers.
All right.
We think we, we got just one other issue, Mr. Chair, that we don't, you've never voted on adopting the bylaws.
That is also correct.
This is a new board. This is not the board that approved the bylaws that were in place. So we will have to present, I think we gave each board member, with the exception of Dr. Tebow, a copy of the bylaws. I think we will have to vote on the bylaws next month and then make those determinations.
Ms. McCullough?
Yeah, okay. What I was really thinking was, say if we, um, vote to depool the lots today, what, and, and say we don't. I mean, the vote, it doesn't, we don't get the vote to, to move forward with the path with, uh, drawing the lots. And we wait until the next meeting. Wouldn't we need to consider what if we had members absent from the next meeting? So, I mean, I would think we'd want to go ahead and move forward because at the end of the day, the other three will get a chance to draw. But there's no guarantee at the December meeting that all board members would be present to draw. Makes sense?
Your man, August meeting.
I mean, the, the August meeting, I'm sorry. Yeah, you were talking about the board members. But there's no guarantee that everybody will be present in August to draw. So use what you got.
Pull your mic.
We would, we would hope that you would, uh, you know, that's why we have the attorney here, to make sure everything is legal and proper. We would hope that you would vote today and decide what you want to do. And then we will be prepared for whatever you decide, if it requires next month, uh, if you get it done today.
Sounds like a plan. All right, any more comments, board members? At this particular time, will you entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to draw lots for today and then the, the members that are not present to pool on the next meeting.
We have a motion by Ms. McCullough, second by Ms. Jackson. All those in favor of drawing lots today?
Public comments first.
I'm sorry?
Public comments.
All right then. Do we have any public comments as a result of that motion? And a second. Any comments? Hearing none. Then we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of voting today, pulling lots today, please vote yes. In opposition, vote no. All right, looks like we've got all six in favor. At this particular time, counselor, will you tell us exactly what we're expected to do now?
Yes, once they all have pulled.
All of it?
Yes, make sure they all pull first.
Shari, you need to be keeping a record of this. Where's my present? Where is my present? I hope I, I hope I don't get a hammer and mail.
So starting with Ms. Jackson, uh, Mr. Chair, if she would just, all right, just go around the days, is that where we're gonna do it? Yes, all right. Ms. Jackson?
In a particular way, I need to say it or just call my name, call my year.
Just say the year, the amount of, or the duration of your term, yes.
Okay, yes. Three years?
Ms. McCullough?
Four years.
Windsor Andrews, one. Mr. Robertson?
You can call me six.
Mr. Sater?
Two.
Dr. Tibido?
Six.
Dr. Tebow, I'm sorry.
Tebow, yes.
I'll get it. All right. Could we repeat those, uh, Shari, so that we know that we are accurate?
Want to say it again?
Pull your mic down, sweetheart, and repeat that. Yes.
I have Ms. Jackson at three years, Ms. McCullough at four years, Mr. Windsor at one year, Mr. Robertson at six years, Mr. Sater at two, and Dr. Tebow at six. Is that right?
All right. Counselor, is there anything else we need to do?
That's it.
All right.
Do I keep my number four? Yes.
You, we, we don't want to make, we want to make sure.
Make sure it's separate. Mr. Bailey, Mr. Bailey.
You can't, if you drop them back.
Make sure.
Oh, okay. You got to un, undocumented already, pull out. All right, let's see what else, what else do we have here? The next item that I believe we had to, perhaps maybe before we adjourn this afternoon, um, is that, uh, well, I don't know, you just shot my ship out the water when you said we don't have any more bylaws. We got to set a whole new deal. And my next subject is going to be inviting board members to either volunteer or, or recommend someone as a, to be a part of the nominating committee for offices, uh, for the twenty-twenty-three year. Now, counselor, do we move forward with that or do we wait until we have a full board? Just talk loud, sweetheart.
I would invite waiting to have a full board before proceeding with that, with nominating and any elected officers.
Thank you, ma'am. The council would advise that we wait until we have a full set of board members before we proceed with nominating committee. I would invite you, if you have such, uh, that subject on your mind and you care to expound on it, give me a call. Uh, if you want to either volunteer or recommend somebody, I would love to have that kind of information as we move forward. Uh, it is my understanding previously to the new change that, uh, we would, uh, identify four persons. Those persons will be presented for your, uh, approval during a regular meeting. And then after that, then they would get together and come up with a slate of offices recommended for the board to approve at some later date during the year twenty-twenty-two. Question. I didn't mess that one up, did I, counselor? All right, okay. Thank you very much. All right, board members, any other comments before we adjourn? Please remember, those who are brand new and you care to meet at the crime lab at eight AM on Saturday morning, sixteen-thirty Tulane Avenue, the corner of Tulane and Linwood, please be, plan to be there. We do now know that there is an MPC meeting that's held on the fourth Wednesday by the parish, uh, board. If you care to sit in on that, it says three PM in the afternoon. Then the ZBA meeting scheduled is July twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, and, um, the Caddo Parish Planning and Training Commission. Yes, I'm sorry, you'll mix, I, I don't have a date for that one.
July twenty-seventh, and these are from one-thirty to two o'clock.
All right, thank you.
July the twenty-seventh?
July twenty-seventh. And, Mr. Chair, before you adjourn, uh, under research, we have been continuously working with, coming up with recommendations to the Caddo Parish School Board. We think we have some pretty decent ideas. And Emily Trent, uh, is, is here. If you will give her five to ten minutes just to present to you what that research has produced and what we will be sharing with the, uh, the Caddo Parish School Board.
Um, yes, so.
Come close to the mic.
Richard Dugans was the, uh, gentleman that came before y'all before to say that he was looking at schools for shelter housing. Uh, at this time, he doesn't have any funding. He's still just trying to decide where he might be able to actually open up a shelter at one of the abandoned schools. He was originally looking at, he gave me the address for Linear Street, uh, in the Cooper Road area. He said it was for the Northside Elementary School. Um, I believe that that school, though, is currently being used for Northside Elementary School. And in the past, it was being used for the Linear Middle School. I'm not from this area, so I'm not exactly. Linear, okay, yes. Okay, so.
Ms. McCullough will know real well. I'm just trying to help you, Ms. McCullough.
So I believe that he's at, I believe that school right now is for Northside Elementary School, though. And so I think that he, uh, really wants to do the old Northside Elementary School, which is on, uh, Northside Road.
A Northside Drive.
Drive. Um, yes, so he, we suggested that he contact the council member for that district just because it would require rezoning, um, a potentially a special use permit as well. So if he were to pursue that, that would be an application that would come before y'all. Sometimes when neighbors hear about that, they're in opposition to shelter housing. So we just wanted to have him get the opportunity to maybe speak with the community leaders there, uh, before he were to apply. So that's where we stand right now with Mr. Dugans. Uh, we are still looking at the other schools in the area just to see what their zoning designations are, listing all the potential uses. Uh, some of the schools, I'm finding, they're split zoned. So, you know, they might have some uses that are permitted in half of the district while the other half of the district has additional uses. So, uh, you know, might have to have rezoning for those properties as well. So we are still moving forward with that. Uh, hope to have a complete presentation for you all at some point that has all the schools that are on our radar as being abandoned. So, any questions?
I, I want a clarity, excuse me. You said there was rezoning for the old Northside Elementary School for a shelter?
None at this time. So there was an applicant, uh, or, excuse me, a potential applicant. Uh, it was before your time on the board. He came and expressed his interest in using one of the abandoned schools in Caddo Parish for shelter housing. Uh, so we gave him a list of potential schools that he could do this at, and he is looking at opening one at the Northside Elementary School. So he has not applied yet. We have suggested that he contact the council member, Councilwoman Taylor, for that district. And she can put him in touch with the community leaders and he can just kind of see if it has any legs, you know, before he invests any money in a rezoning, special use permit.
And a shelter, a homeless shelter, you're saying?
Uh, I believe it was for battered women. Uh, he had mentioned other type of shelters as well, but I think his particular interest right near, right now is for battered women. Uh, and just because you weren't here at the time when he came, he, he does already have all of his paperwork ready to go. So he's got the, the business side set up. He just needs to explore the funding. So I look to see what other, just jurisdictions, just kind of around the world, what they do. Uh, there's government funding that he can explore and then community funding as well. So that's, that's something that he's going to have to get lined up and then just securing exactly which site he wants to do it at. So.
That proposal?
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Have you found the school board to be receptive to your assistance?
So we haven't presented anything to them at this time. We'd like to try and get, uh, you know, comprehensive of all the schools that are closed at this right now before we go present to them. They did provide the list to us. Uh, and we have not informed them of Mr. Dugan's desire at Northside Elementary. of Mr. Dugan's desire at Northside Elementary School yet. So, you know, we want him to at least get the opportunity to see if it's something that he can pursue.
It's my understanding the list has twenty-four distinct properties.
Uh, our list did not have twenty-four, I don't believe ours could have been outdated. We could follow up with them and see if there's another one that they have, maybe it's got more updated list. I know even on the list that they gave us, one of them included Newton Elementary School, which I think is partially leased and is about to be fully leased. So that one might, you know, no longer be on our list anymore. But that one is being partially leased to one of the colleges in this vicinity.
Is it anticipated that you will make a presentation at a school board meeting?
I don't know if we're planning.
We have not gotten to that part, Mr. Robertson. We're just trying to get some information and some research to discuss with the, the school board representatives. You remember there were three that we had been in, had some email contact with just having discussions, and we were trying to get that information. We're, we're also talking to, the city of Shreveport is going through its Parks and Recreation Master Plan to see if they may be interested in possibly some of these in the city facilities for additions to the park system. And there's one school on one sixty-nine, I think it's Timmons Elementary, that we were talking, we'll be talking to the Caddo Parish Commission, Parks and Recreation, because there's no identifiable park in that particular area to see if they would consider they evidently have some funding available, see if they would even be interested in having conversations with the school board about converting that into maybe a park and a community center.
And so you said the other option was Newton Smith?
That was another school that he was looking at originally just because the zoning designation would have allowed it by right. He wouldn't have had to go through any kind of public hearing process, but it's partially leased right now, and I think that there are potential plans to have it fully leased.
Oh, okay.
Being leased by one of the colleges.
Your board member has said that Susserly is.
Susserly.
That's, that's partially under lease and probably will include all that, as you know, it's contiguous to the campus, just add that to the campus.
So the zoning designation there is institutional campus, IC, and so we were trying to find something that would work for him that, you know, be a little simpler process. But the other schools that we have found that are abandoned don't meet that zoning designation. So they will, he likely, if he does pursue this, or if anyone else does pursue this for that particular use for shelter housing, they would be before you. But as, and again, we've got new board members, so you all were not here for the presentation at the pre-meeting a few months back, but there's a lot of other uses that you could do too, that, at some of these abandoned schools, it would work. So senior living facilities, I've seen that's kind of done throughout the, the US apartments. So if someone wanted to do something such as that, then there, there's opportunity for permitted uses, so.
Could you give me the zoning use again for Newton Smith?
IC, institutional campus.
Oh, okay.
Zoning district.
Ms. McCullough, for your benefit, Mr. Clark offered the services of the MPC staff to the school board after my neighborhood association was rebuffed by the board when we asked them to hire professional land use planners to assist in the disposition of twenty-four vacant school board properties, including one right in the middle of Broadmoor that we were most concerned about, Arthur Circle. And after the board dismissed our request, Mr. Clark stepped in and said, well, we've got professional planners, we can help. So I'm very grateful to him for that, and I'm glad to hear that you're making some progress. I'm hopeful that whatever your work product is at the end of the process, it's a public document that can be shared with other neighborhoods and other communities. Are you going beyond the city limits with this?
We are, we have a contract with the Caddo Parish Administration, so we can go up to five miles in the planning limits. And the school I was sharing with you, Timmons, I believe it is in the planning limits. And it was a wonderful school, you know, I live in Greenwood. It was a wonderful school that has just been totally abandoned and it being of no use. So we wanted to just reach out to, to Caddo Parish Commission with the same ideas that we're sharing with the city of Shreveport and the Caddo Parish School Board. Our, our scope is limited because that's as far as we can go. But we are, we are gonna be going to these schools in our planning limits, sharing that information with the board also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question.
Yes.
I wasn't here for that presentation, so are you able to share that with those members that weren't here?
Absolutely, yeah, it's, it's in a PDF format, so we can send that to you. It's gonna include a zoning map, like what you saw in your cases today to identify the school, and then it'll list all of the permitted uses, special use permit, potential, and then kind of what staff's recommendation would be for those sites.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any more questions for Ms. Emily? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all.
I'll share one last thing with the board, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry? I'll share one last thing with the board. Yes, sir, go ahead. We are also in deep discussions with, and I never get this correct, so. I'm asking for your forgiveness before I get started, but I think it's LSU Health-Arsenal, because there are a lot of state-owned properties out off of Linwood and Kings Highway, as you know, that are not in line with the zoning ordinance. And the state with the sovereignty prevents us from being able to impose any zoning restrictions on the state. But we're in discussions with LSU to, the Arshna part is private, so we can deal with that. But we're in discussions with LSU to, and they are in somewhat agreement to start working with us in bringing the properties out there up to the, the code for the city of Shreveport. And there are also some discussions about a medical corridor district as was outlined in the master plan. But we're in, we're in deep discussions with them. This is the first time they have been receptive to the city to bring their facilities in line with the codes for the city of Shreveport. So you'll be hearing about that in the, in the very near future. We've been always very interested in having a relationship with the Caddo Parish School Board, but also in having a relationship with the health science industry in our city. So we're really excited about these discussions that, that are in the embryonic stages, but we are really excited about those discussions now.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Does this have to do with the proposal to move LSU S downtown?
We have no, we have no knowledge of, I, I probably know less than you know about moving LSU S downtown. I think at one time, there was a discussion about moving LSU S over where the medical center is, but we don't have a whole lot of information about that. Any more questions? I would like to take this opportunity, Mr. Clark, if I may, to welcome Dr. Tebow to the board. I know that most of us were upstairs when she was introduced with Mr. Robertson, Dr. Tebow. She's our new board member, and we're excited to have her present. What I would like to, and aside from saying welcome, is to invite our secretary at some point in time, and I know you guys are busy as bees upstairs, but put together for us a new personnel list with board members and contact information for those various boards that we enumerated a few minutes ago, so that we could reach out and, and talk to them if we need to, and in particular for you guys, if you have some information you care to share with me as it relates to nominating, suggesting persons to be nominated on the, on the nominating committee. The third thing that I have is that I want Mr. Robertson to know, because the rest of us found out upstairs, this is Mr. Chen's last date with us. We've certainly enjoyed having you, you brought to us a different set of views on how to take a look at these, these requests that they, that you guys have brought before us, and thank you very much for your service.
Thanks, sir.
Wish you Godspeed. We'll entertain a motion, please. The screening is now yours, thank you. You got, you got me there, I go, what, say it.